It is eight thirty-two on Saturday morning, June twenty-second. I want to welcome everybody to the Saturday edition of Planning and zoning commission for our special meeting. Would you please call the roll man?
Tom Dawson.
Present.
Cynthia Meyer.
Present.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Patrick Connell.
Here.
Pablo Serna.
Here.
And not present is Richard Gartman, Cheryl Lee, and Greg Sherry. They all did let us know in advance that they would not be in attendance.
Thank you very much. We do have a call-
Do I get to be here today?
Matt Lassen, I'm so sorry.
Thank you for that. And when I finish my coffee, I'll be more awake. Item two on the agenda, citizen comments. This is a time where anyone who wishes to make any comments, public comments about anything not on the agenda can come forward. They'll have three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any citizen? Madam Secretary, do we have any one lined up for?
No ma'am, not at this time, thank you.
Then we'll skip that and we'll go right on to the agenda. Item three, items for individual consideration, 3A, discussion on Bastrop building block the 3 code, including but not limited to tree preservation, sign sections, and signage. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have one item on the agenda to discuss today. As you said, we're going to discuss the B3 codes. Last time we covered a few subjects, including permitted uses and others. Today, we're going to take a look at tree preservation, street sections, and signage. We're going to take these in order of, I believe, street sections, and then we're going to do signage, and then we're going to hit tree preservation. The street sections, Mr. Lewis and his team will go over along with signage, and then our team will do tree preservation. The street sections kind of deal with both of these as they relate to, you know, how they interface with the public realm, and so the street sections is the first thing we'll cover this morning. And then, obviously, we can talk about anything in the B3 codes that you have any questions or comments on, but these are the three major talking points that we'll go over today that council asked you all to take a look at, three of the nine or eight from the joint work session. So with that, we'll kick it off, and I will hand it over to Mr. Lewis.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commission.
Matt Lewis with Simple City Design.
I expected this kind of be like a roundtable, so I apologize. This format is that we're going to be going over with the street sections are all on paper. But as we enter into the conversation, first, I want you to imagine the street section of walking down Main Street, and the elements of the street section which make it up. The way that the signs relate to the street, the way that the buildings relate to the street, they're very close, the street and the buildings interact directly at level. Now, let's go to Highway seventy-one. The buildings are set back generally five to six hundred feet off of the roadways, the parking goes out front, the signage is much larger because you're traveling at a different scale, different speed, the street trees wouldn't necessarily work in that kind of context. Now, let's go over to like ninety-five, and you'll notice that there, it's not as large as going down Highway seventy-one, but the buildings are set back a little bit further, the signage is not quite as high as it is along seventy-one. But what I'm doing is painting the context of the streets, and all of the elements that are part of the street, and the signage, and the trees, and the way the buildings relate to the streets are all based on the context of the street section. The speed of the street, the type of street that it is, the vehicular traffic that they convey, all of these elements are critical to thinking through the street sections. So knowing that your code creates the patterns that are on the ground today, as we think through future patterns, on all of the elements that you're discussing today, we need to think through how transitions happen and occur. One of the transitional items that you'll notice is that in the B3 code, it regulates how the buildings relate to the streets, and in different contexts, the buildings move based off of the location of the streets, the types of streets, the width of the streets. So if you're in a rural environment, the streets are generally narrow, the buildings are pulled back, the street trees are not in uniform order, they may meander with nature, you know, with natural grades, the streets may not have curb and gutter, you may have bar ditches, open swells, right? And so, that's a rural context, and if you bring it into a suburban context, you know, then you'll think through how the buildings, they may sit back a little bit further, but not quite to Main Street level. So in front of you all today, you have a series of street cross-sections that we are proposing to integrate into the new code. And essentially, as infill development or new development occurs, they would be able to, the development community would be able to pick street sections that was most suitable to the built environment and to their development types. And you'll notice there's a variety of right-of-way width. So I'm going to walk you through the chart real quick. The first thing you have is the number, which we actually did not number the street sections in this one, but as we enter them into the code, they will be identified numerically so that they'll be referenced throughout the code as numerical numbers. Then you'll have the street type, is the next thing, curb radius, speed, miles per hour, your setbacks, and place type, and then you'll have a street section and plan, which is the cross-section. And then, the last section is the building types, and the building types that would be appropriate along these street types. All of these street sections interrelate with your place types in the code. And so, depending on the place types, would depend upon what street types would be available for the development community to select. Furthermore, because of the block structure that the community is going for with their amendments to the thoroughfare master plan, if, for example, someone opted to do a boulevard, which is a hundred and thirty feet of right-of-way and fifty feet of pavement, that's what those numbers mean. So, under boulevard, you'll see BLVD, one thirty dash fifty, and as you go down, you'll have avenue, one hundred dash fifty, and so on. Those numbers correspond to the right-of-way width needed to house the street cross-section, to the pavement width of the street when it's built. That's what that is. And so, as you're thinking through a hundred and thirty feet of right-of-way on three hundred and thirty-foot blocks, that's a substantial width. And so, in some examples where you may want to have a boulevard in a formal setting, or in a location that's handling a lot of traffic, but you don't want to build a highway, boulevards allow for that. And so, it allows for a throughput, as well as businesses to front the throughput, so that you can actually have pull-off spaces and parking, bike lanes, walkable environments. And so, that's one of the widest street sections we're proposing, but in that scenario, a developer may come and say, "Well, this is going to make our blocks shorter," and we would anticipate that that would be okay as well, that you could go smaller than three hundred and thirty feet, particularly with the variety of street cross-sections that you could select in the pattern.
Matt, a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the entrance to the colony, would that be-
It's a boulevard.
It's a boulevard, right?
That's a four-lane boulevard. It's a little bit, it's not necessarily in the context of this, though, but it's a boulevarded section. In the DOT terms, like Department of Transportation, they call that a MAD four. It's a median divided four-lane roadway, so it's got four lanes, two lanes on one side, two on the other, and a median up the center. It functions a little bit different, but the right-of-way dimensions would be about the same. Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And so then, as you walk through, these are the most intense streets, and as you go further in the packet, you'll notice we'll start introducing neighborhood streets. So there's a street that requires fifty-four feet of right-of-way, and if you'll remember the framework that Bastrop built out in was fifty-five feet of right-of-way, so we tried to include a few sections in here that would match that same characteristics within a foot or two, but still serve for the neighborhood environment, for the retail environment, for the house form retail, all the way up to the, you know, large developments that would be able to have a lot of traffic generation. And so, in each of the areas, you'll notice that there's street types, and it tells you where they're appropriate. The curb radius, the curb radius is very important, and it establishes the amount of speed that vehicles can travel through the turns. And the reason that this is important is, if you think about your curb radius in downtown, they're generally about nine feet. You have one that's about zero feet, it's a ninety-degree turn on the corner of Chestnut and, no, not Chestnut, on Main and Pine. Yeah, Main and Pine, I was almost there. Main and Pine has a ninety-degree turn, and what happens is the car has to come to almost complete stop to navigate the turn. It makes it safe for pedestrians. In certain contexts, that would be appropriate, and other contexts where you have a bunch of throughput, you're going to have much wider turn radiuses, and the cars are able to carry their speed for safety of vehicular traffic, and you don't have pedestrians intermingling in those types of areas. All of those types of elements are corresponding back to the place types that you're envisioning as the full, long-term build-out as the community achieves the B3 code, if you will. And the same holds true for the street trees and parking and for signage, for example. I know I'm skipping around on the agenda, but all of these are interrelated, and they all tie back to the place type and the street type. And the reason that this is important is, in this interim transition period where you have buildings that may not meet the full intent of the existing code, transitions need to be established so that you're not locking up the market or stifling the market. Let's say that a building owner comes in and wants to do a new use and maybe do a little bit of expansion on the building. What you don't want to happen is trigger full compliance, and you say, "No, you need to move your building, you know, fifty feet forward." Like, that would be, you know, out of scale, out of context. And so, what you would allow for is transitional areas to happen, so transitional signage is something we'd like to talk to you all about today. Street trees, you know, what type of elements of the code would trigger compliance, and where would you say, "Well, as long as you're meeting, furthering the intent of meeting the code, then maybe you would be allowed to do it." It's a really important conversation to have as we think through how this gets implemented over the long-term vision of, you know, building Bastrop as the community grows. And so, we can keep walking through here, each of these elements, and if you have particular questions on the street sections, we can do that, but you'll notice under the place types, as the intensity of the roadway increases, the place types becomes more intense as well. Place type five, for example, is your most urban area, you'll have three-to-five-story, you know, type of construction. Place type four is house form with a maximum of two-and-a-half, three stories in most areas. Place type three is your residential neighborhoods, and so, when you're thinking of it in those scales, that's kind of the hierarchical structure of the code. And so, you'll notice that the building setbacks are also identified, and so those vary, and it allows for movable building envelopes with the streets. All of those are going to correspond directly back to the place types as well, and so those are written into the code, and so, those standards will match back up to the individual characteristics with the place types. And then you can see the building types that would be allowed to be built along these streets, so you can kind of start to envision the overall built environment of how it would feel, how it would function, and the types of structures. Not necessarily the uses in the structures, but the types of structures that would be allowed and where they'd be built, and the organization of the structures and how they fit to the roadways. This is a lot of information that we've shared with you all. These are in the pattern book, but we'd love any comments or questions about the street sections that you all have at this point.
Which of these would you categorize Main Street as currently? Where were we, more of an avenue, boulevard?
Main Street functions more like a commercial street. It's a narrower street section, and in modern times, it may not be the appropriate street section. It's a little bit limiting, and so, we wrote street sections in here for Commercial Street at sixty, so like Commercial Street two would be similar to Main Street. It's on the third page of your packet at the top.
And one of the reasons I'm asking is that, you know, we've talked in the past about, you know, like zero lot line, you know, structures and whatnot, and none of these, except for the commercial alley, allow for a zero, like a zero lot, or like a zero lot line build here, so the setback is at least, well, from the commercial looks like ten to twenty feet. So are we talking about from the property line, from the street?
No, okay, that's a great question. I'm glad you brought this up. This is something we were going to get to. Essentially, what we're doing is, those setbacks now, the way that Main Street was created is your awnings and all of the street furniture at the building level are protruding out into the right-of-way. What we did in this code, for simplicity, for public works, for administration, is we put the awnings and those types of things where the buildings relate with the street into the private side. And so, that's where your awnings would be, your street, I'm sorry, your benches, your outdoor cafes, and so it's called the first layer of the lot. And the building is still going to be what's considered up to the zero lot line from the, you know, from the overall perspective, but what it's doing is it's moving those elements back into the private realm, and so that you're not having to come to the city to ask for license agreements, and so that the city is not approving certain things that are protruding into the right-of-way that they have to maintain, that if they have to tear it down, they have to rebuild it. It's moving it back into the private realm, and so that the public realm is only the public facilities that they'll be taking care of. So that's why you have that, but from the, you know, walking down the street view, you wouldn't notice it. It's only because of the organization. We worked with the Public Works Department, and that was one of the things we said, "Well, we can continue to do this, and you can either allow awnings and outdoor cafes, and, you know, allowing for, you know, people to put their merchandise out in the frontage." It's in the right-of-way. Do you want to do license agreements? Do you want to, you know, how do you want to handle this if people are doing this? And the thought was, "Well, let's just pull it back so that it's on their own property." That's the reason that you'll notice that, but again, and some of these need to be modified too, and so there may be, this may say from zero to twenty, for example, on some of these.
Right. And the one I ask is, you know, when we're talking about a high-density place type like, you know, P5, if we're, you know, sticking everything in a smaller space, if we're having to push that building back, I mean, if you were to do that, you know, like down here, our buildings would, you know, shrink by a substantial amount, considering what we have now. So, that was my only question.
Yes, sir. And that's a fantastic question. There was a lot of conversation about that. I should have explained that a little bit more in depth. And you're absolutely right, those buildings, if you move the buildings back, they wouldn't fit, or if you added any more criteria on them, the lots are so small, they couldn't achieve the minimum criterias, and that's not the intent. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
So, walking down the street, it's, you know, we have basically the sidewalks, one half private, one half public, with just requirements on the public side to maintain theirs, and we just maintain the public side to the city.
That's correct. So the way that the new code would be written is that the, there'd be a line of delineation where the frontage line work is, and so you can see it on the, if you look at Commercial Street sixty, and you see that dash line showing where the tables are, and you can see like the awnings protruding, that's where the right-of-way and the frontage line would be created. So the private side would be responsible for building that segment where the tables would fit and where the awnings would go. And then everything outside of that dash line, or inside of that dash line, for example, would be public right-of-way. And this is one of the first times that cities have established the clear delineation between the public and private realm, and it, what it's doing is it makes it easier to maintain, there's clarity of where things go, and that was the intent with it. But you're absolutely correct, some of those setbacks are going to probably need to vary to make sure that we are not eating into the lot depth.
Matt?
Matt, I was just kind of, on that same line, just for clarification. So I understand this idea that the awning seating area would be set back in the private side, but you're saying that is that ten-to-fifteen-foot setback?
Yes, sir.
So if someone's building new construction, and they want a true zero setback and put their building right on that public frontage, they can or can't do it, or you can only use that ten, fifteen-foot setback for awning space?
So there's a few factors in the code that would determine it. One would be based off of the setbacks, but in a Main Street environment, they would have to select, either they're going to do bay windows, they're going to do a stoop, there's some interaction that has to be established of how the buildings relate to the street. The building could come to that street edge, but they would be required to have an awning, so that eight feet at a minimum would have to be established with awnings, or I think they can do a stoop, a gallery, a light well, there's a variety of frontage types that they can pick. So the developer or the builder can actually select a variety of frontage types of how it's going to interreact. And so what would happen is the lot depth, depending on what they selected, bay windows are three feet, right? So they'd select three feet, well, and then it would say in the code that the building would have to be at, you know, zero to five feet, or zero to twelve feet from the frontage line, and so they would say, "Well, we have a three-foot, you know, bay windows, and then our building can come up," so it's only a three-foot setback, for example. That's how it would work. But the establishment of how the building relates to the street would be done within that realm.
And is this the same space where the signage is going to have to hang?
Yes, sir.
The signage can't extend over into the-
Correct. And so your signage would be how-
And so something like from, along Chestnut east of Main Street, then we would not end up with anything like that, because like on the south side of the street, we just have, we have buildings, and we have a couple that have a cover, but for the most part, there's nothing there like on Main Street. So we would do, we would not have that any longer, correct?
It's possible. It depends on what they designate as their frontage, and so, if, for example, that's the side of that building, the frontage is, you know, so that would be the side, that is possible, there's zero side setbacks, and so you could get a building. But in that scenario, under the code, you'd have to have glass at the ground level of eighty percent to activate that, you couldn't have a blank wall along that edge wall, unless it's an interior lot. If it's an interior lot, then you would be allowed to do that, because you'd anticipate that the exterior corner lot would be built out. So there's corner lot treatments that are handled, depending on, you know, how the corner gets handled and the location of it.
Matt, on the pop-up?
Yes, ma'am.
So the expansion of the sidewalks is a public area then, where we had the plaid board put, that would be, so, in that area, because my question on that was, and this totally answers it, the public would not have the tables and chairs, but will have shading of trees and things, because I was thinking, that was my biggest concern on that, was nobody's going to be out there in August in the sun, so that would be the public aspect of that. So the city will put, like this picture on Commercial Two, trees landscaping down for, down Main Street?
Yes, ma'am, that is the plan. From my understanding, they built that street exactly like it's going to be built in the plan sets, and so they were very methodical in the way that it got organized. And I do want to state that you would, you know, building owners or shop owners still could come and get a license agreement, and so let's say that they wanted to do, you know, tables in the right-of-way, that still is an option. What we're trying to do is not make it the norm. And so, if there was a section that had wide sidewalks, and particularly in the downtown, you're going to have, the structure that's there will remain in place. This is for new development particularly, where this gets addressed, but they could still do a license agreement. And even under these new scenarios, maybe the sidewalks are so wide that you have restaurants that want to spill all the way out into large areas, and they come into the city, they get a license agreement, that process would still be in place.
Okay.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, can you talk a little bit about what's, what other places that you're aware of that are doing regarding bike lanes, park benches or benches, and pathway lighting?
Yes, sir. Bike lanes are complicated. The city of Austin, for example, they're painting, you know, white bike lanes on forty-five mile-an-hour streets and calling them bike lanes, and, you know, that's one approach. I don't think it's necessarily the safest approach. In Bastrop, for example, I think that you all have the ability, since you have such a great network of streets, to designate bike routes rather than lanes, but in some of these scenarios, these larger street sections, they're pulling bike lanes either inside of curb lines, and they're designating dedicated bike facilities, so they'll do a raised curb and a five-or-six-foot bikeway. Second Street and Third Street in Austin, I'm sorry, Third Street and Austin, Texas has done this, and it's been really effective to increase bike safety. Because the space is delineated with a physical barrier, people feel safer to do it. Another thing that people are doing, and I'm glad you bring this up as well, this is something we've talked about, they're moving parking on the outside of bike lanes and moving the bike lanes in so that there's a physical barrier, and then you have on-street parking on the outside, so you would have on-street parking, bike lane, street trees, sidewalks, and that's an organizational element that could be possible. In most of the sections that we've proposed here, we're either using share rows or anticipating that an off-network street would be designated as a bike route, so less heavily traveled, a slower street, and so maybe there's ways of doing it where you paint, you know, spaces for bikeways and designate routes. That would be one. As far as the street furniture, it's really important. If you want people to walk, you want people to sit, you know, people need to be able to take a short stroll, have some relief, sit down and chat, or draw, or whatever they want to do, right? And so, the organization and placement of street furniture is critical to the success of this. A lot of these elements fit together so well to create the whole picture, and if you start disconnecting trashcans from every street corner, or not having benches in the appropriate locations, then, you know, the walkability factor starts to decrease. So, all of the pieces and where they designate furniture, or sitting zones, or shade zones, park space, or little gathering spaces, is important. So, different cities handle them in different ways, and we just need to find out what's appropriate for Bastrop, and particularly with the way that the city's trying to grow and make it multimodal. So that's a great question. We'd love your input too, by the way.
And whether we have sitting spaces or outside cafes, still taking into consideration the requirements of ADA?
Yes, ma'am. And so, in the code, there's a four-foot clear zone that would be a minimum requirement. And some cities have done six-foot clear zones. It would really depend on the sidewalk width, so you want to make sure that the signage leaves clear zones, and furthermore, ADA has gotten really good about their street sections. In San Marcos, we actually built all the new streets to meet every single ADA complacency. So the sidewalks, I'm sorry, the crosswalks have exterior bricks, so if their cane hits the brick, they understand that they're in within the crosswalks. The way that the curbs lay down, that approaches two intersections, they do a change of pavement surface, and so, we'd highly recommend that Bastrop really study the ADA rules, because they're getting so good now that there would be groups that would come study the street sections, so they could put them in a perfect environment, so that, you know, people that are recently blind can actually experience it in a safe manner. But ADA complacency is really critical here.
Are they still using truncated domes at intersections and like?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
That came out early.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Really quick, Matt, on that same note, back to kind of the bicycle, and with kind of ADA as well, I think we all understand that ADA is very important and needs to be incorporated, but at the same time, ADA compliance increases the cost of any project by a significant amount. I guess my question comes to the bike lanes, it's kind of that same thing where we want a walkable, at least, I want a walkable city, absolutely, and my mind doesn't necessarily make it a bikeable city. I've ridden bikes my entire life and feel very comfortable in traffic, and I realize that other people may not, but they are a motor, they are a vehicle on the road. I guess the question is, is trying to, how much does the city kind of expend to create bike-safe areas versus the amount of usage it gets and the overall just kind of value to, I mean, I think people see walkability, not everyone sees bikeability in that same category, I guess.
Yes, sir. And that's a great question. I think it is a community conversation, too. You know, one of the ideas is that independence from age eight to eighty should be possible. So imagine an eight-year-old, do you want to provide adequate infrastructure for someone that's eight years old to bike to school? It may start off with a conversation where you say, "Let's think of some infrastructure where we'd like to connect people to a place, the library to the elementary school." And maybe that's your first bike route, and you really test it out. Is it increasing ridership? Are people using it? Is it safe? So, I mean, I believe that it could be a series of conversations that get held that really start to figure that out, and I think Mr. Jones wants to chime in as well.
Yeah. So, on that point, when we took a look at the thoroughfare plan, and going back to the gridded street network, it really creates alternative routes to be able to bike on without having to designate bike lanes. So downtown, for instance, instead of staying on Chestnut, you could be on Spring, or Walnut, or some of the other streets that aren't the main thoroughfare. So by going back to that, and not forcing all of your bike pedestrian traffic to these collectors and arterial streets, and giving them alternative methods, you really kind of create a more bikeable community without having the added infrastructure costs of just a designated bike lane. Now, it's still something to explore, but really with going back to that gridded thoroughfare network, it really almost allows those alternative routes without forcing them to the, you know, the more traveled thoroughfares, so just wanted to point that out.
So, just so I understand, I'm good. When, to clarify, you're not saying that we create, is that the idea of a bike route then, is we're not, we can't force them onto these side streets, but we want to make the side streets more friendly so that the idea is, you know, instead of fighting Main Street traffic and Chestnut traffic, they want to travel on these other?
That's correct. We could designate bike routes, absolutely, but without actually having the extra infrastructure costs of designating a bike route, people will naturally bike on the routes that aren't Chestnut and aren't ninety-five and Old Austin Highway through the grid, similar to a car, it disperses traffic. It'll do the same with alternative modes of transportation, so you might walk one block off of Chestnut, for example, to get from the courthouse to City Hall. So you'll stay off that main and let the cars have that, because we're not doing away with the car. So naturally, an unattended benefit of the grid network is dispersing that traffic and having those alternative means, and not forcing every mode of transportation onto the same arterial or collector street.
And is designating a bike route as simple as, "This is the bike route," or is there some type of form or function or change that goes to, because I know we're talking about like not having that extra added infrastructure cost, is it just as simple as the city saying, "These are the ways we prefer you to go," and maybe some signage?
We could do that, we could accomplish that through signage, striping, different things, but allowing them to coexist within the same right-of-way is kind of the goal, but this is kind of what we're talking about, so, great questions, we can accomplish it. Certainly, we could have designated bike lanes, it's just a matter of cost and everything like that, so, but unless there's something I'm missing, you can just designate through ordinance, bike routes, similar- Similar, we have like no parking ordinances designated on certain streets. You could designate certain streets as bike routes and therefore put up signage and things of that nature and encourage it on those kind of, you know, secondary streets.
Is, Chief, is, is a bicycle not considered a vehicle just under the Transportation Code?
Under the Transportation Code, it is a vehicle.
So, so, so by ordinance, we can force them to use certain-
You would not force them-
Not force, but what do you, so what do you mean by ordinance?
So ordinance, you would just designate, that way you could put up signage and things like that that would designate a bike, a bike route.
Okay, so when you say by ordinance, like this is the designated bike route-
Yeah, no, you wouldn't, you would not get ticketed for biking down Chestnut Street.
I was, when you, when you said like that-
But by ordinance, you would designate routes that we prefer you to use as a mode. So we could do that or, you know, we could not. That's kind of a conversation to be had, but that'd be great to, to talk about as a group and maybe make a recommendation to council on that, or at least as a talking point.
Matt, just a question on alternative route because sadly, when I've ridden my bike and tried to get to the state park, I ended up going all the way through to Eastern Village, taking light, crossing. We don't really have an alternative route, do we, to get from town up to the state park?
No, not currently. But, but again, by overlaying that grid, there's opportunities there. I know that there is a project in the works that is a trail to the state park. I'm not from, exactly familiar with all the ins and outs of it, but it was, I believe it was a grant that we received from Tech Dot that's looking into providing that, that path to get from downtown to the state park. It's not, not completed yet, but it's still in the, kind of the design phase.
Thanks, some of the considerations there are getting across ninety-five, getting up the hill. How can someone in a wheelchair get across ninety-five and up the hill?
Yeah.
How can a little kid get up there?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so there's lots of designing to be done.
Yeah. And another thing where we've talked with the county about is safe routes to school. Actually coming up with a designated plan for sidewalks and similar to the bicycle, having safe routes to school designations for foot and or bicycle traffic from town to the different educational facilities at B I S D.
Just to clarify, because I'm going over Commissioner, Commissioner Lee's comments, the, the stuff we're talking about is for all new developments, not retroactively applying to existing areas, correct?
That's correct. Anything new would come in. Alternatively though, if we were to approve funding for street reconstruction, we would come back and, and follow these things. So similar to what we're doing on Main Street, the Main Street Rehabilitation Project will follow these. So it, it would be as time goes on and as streets need to be repaired, they would come into compliance based on the new standards.
I guess, I guess the, the concern that she has and myself as well is, you know, for example, if we're using boulevard, which, you know, makes sense to have some sort of bike lane on like a boulevard, you know, a larger area, trying to do that, you know, like on Main Street now, wouldn't really, wouldn't work. Trying to do on Chestnut also probably wouldn't work.
Yes, and that's also a Tech Dot controlled right-of-way, so we have little control, we have input. But these would be for our locally governed right-of-ways, but, but yes. But again, going to that gritted, gridded network, you don't have to have as many of those boulevards. So the Tech Dot right-of-ways would naturally become your more heavily automobile traveled corridors. And then you would have those kind of primary, secondary through the grid that you could go through. And you wouldn't have to build, you know, eighteen arterial streets because you're forcing all the traffic into one corridor. So you're dispersing it through the city, similar to what's been going in downtown since eighteen thirty-two.
I have one, one last comment was regarding street lighting or pathway lighting. How are we handling it right now and what is the, the plan moving forward?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Trey Jobe has been doing some research on that and he's been presenting to council. So obviously you want to have it to, if we're promoting walkability, you want it to feel safe when you're walking. So they've done a study on that and looked at the spacing requirements where you would need essentially, and I'm going to get the verbiage wrong, but the, the halo, you want those to meet from the light shed, right? So you have the poles, they have the light shed, and you wouldn't want a bunch of spacing in that of dark areas. So it's all based off how it feels when you're walking. I, I believe that there's still standards for the dark skies, that they'd be compliant with that.
That's right.
So they're based off that walkability. Again, we want it to be something that you can walk down during nighttime and feel safe and not have to walk through dark space to get from point A to point B to point C. And so it's based off that pedestrian shed.
So in these street sections, and I'm, I'm assuming we're going to be, some developers are going to come and present ideas and they're going to maybe pick one of these sections. Are we going to bring that up or should we plug it into this, into this design so that-
It's already built in to the design details in, in the area of the B three code. So it's not specified exactly spacing in the street sections. You'll see there's an area designated to where you would put the streetlights and street furniture and things of that nature, but the spacing is dictated in a different area of the code. Yeah, so that, it's really not an option. It's, this is how you're going to do it. And again, if they don't want to do it that way, that's fine. There might be areas where that makes sense, but they have to come, have a conversation with you and council.
How hard would it be to draw it in?
They're, they're, it, it's in there. It's not in the street section, but if you'll look on the different cross-sections of the street, you can see the areas designated for, there's like an eight-foot or six-foot within the right-of-way, and that's where we plan on putting the street furniture and, and the street lights.
I see a street light, okay.
Yes. So it, it's in there, but the, the spacing exactly is, is detailed in a different section.
That's all I have for street sections unless there's any other questions, which, those were fantastic questions, by the way.
I had a question. On, so currently with, with our Main Street we have now, this may be a public, public works question. Who maintains, who's responsible for maintaining the sidewalks and everything else in front of the buildings in Main Street right now?
Yeah.
It kind of depends, doesn't it?
I'm, I'm looking for a trick answer, so.
So specific to Main Street here, there are some property owners, the way the lots were laid out, if they own a portion of the sidewalk, we own a portion of the sidewalk. And that's what we're working on with easements right now.
The, the reason I ask is that, you know, for example, the right-of-way in front of my house, I have to mow the grass, take care of that, right? So my question, I, what I'm trying to figure out is, is the shop owner, the building owner of a building on one of these, you know, P five areas responsible for the maintenance to the, on the, in the front side of the building? And if they are regardless, then, then I'm trying to, then I'm trying to overcome the idea between having, you know, stuff pulled back into the private realm if they're still responsible for the public side, you know, at the same time.
Right, so, so the only way I understand it is we would take care of the trees, the sidewalks when they need to be rebuilt, things of that nature. Are we going to be there sweeping the sidewalk every morning? Probably not, but-
Right.
Yes, absolutely. The, the infrastructure we would maintain.
Okay. What about like-
In the public realm.
What about like the winter if it were to ice over?
Same thing. Yeah, in the public realm, we would do that.
Okay. So, so building owners or property owners are just going to be responsible for their, 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 uh, private space-
Yes.
And you guys can handle everything else.
That's correct.
Okay.
One of the reasons why the, the sidewalk project has taken so long to implement was because some building owners' property stopped at the, at the front door. Some went halfway, some went further. Some were happy to sign over the easement for the city, some weren't. So now I think we're about ready to-
I'm just trying to, to gauge if, if we're pulling, if we're pulling, you know, awnings and everything else into the back end of the private space by, by pushing that back, does it make sense if the building owner was still responsible for the maintenance to the front, you know, or if, you know, or if they're not, then, then this makes more sense to me and that's, I think that's how it should be. But if it wasn't, then it would be kind of a harder idea to swallow.
Well, this will make sure that it's maintained properly.
Yes, that's correct.
So Trey, on the section of Main Street in front of where they're not going to have expansion of the sidewalks, like the post office down that way, it, will the city then be responsible for all those sidewalks in that area?
Anything that we get an easement signed on, we'll, we will maintain, yes.
But when, when all of this work in the future will be done, will that be taken care of all the way down that way too on the sidewalks?
Yes, all the sidewalks will be done from farm all the way to water. Just not all of the streets will be overlaid, but all the sidewalks will be there.
I remember one thing, Matt, on, on the alleys.
Yes, sir.
Has the fire, uh, signed off on the alley?
I don't know if signed off is the right word. We've been working with them though, and, and so Eric, I think he's the Assistant Chief, had been reading the international fire code and we've been talking through this with them. We're going to make sure to meet their, you know, that they have landing zones, those types of things. Matt, I don't know if you want to chime in on this as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So everything we do has been a, a group effort, a team effort, and fire's been included on every conversation. We are still working through that, but we're similar to how we've had to do from a planning side and y'all have done from a P and Z commissioner's side, is challenge the way we're thinking about everything. And our city manager has been real clear about challenging our fire department and thinking kind of of innovative ways to, to address that without, you know, having to have these, you know, mandatory things from the I F C in order to fight fire. You can fight fire with water. And so it's kind of challenging the fire department as well, not, not sacrificing anything, but we're certainly keeping them in the loop and they have a seat at the table and they're helping us along through that. And so when, when we get off in a rabbit hole and we're like, oh, we can do this, the fire department's like, oh, maybe not, because we need to do this to fight fire. So it's certainly been kept in the loop and a, a part of the conversation as we work through it. But whatever we land on finally, we'll certainly have the, the sign off of our fire department and fire chief.
Okay, so the next topic we are going to talk about is signage. And one thing that, that we need to be mindful of is not to allow for total sign pollution. Sign, signage is something that has very high entitlement and once it's entitled, it's allowed to remain in perpetuity for quite a long time. Even when disasters occur, they can reestablish the sign. And some sign ordinances can create this. If you have, you know, thirty-five, forty-foot sign allowances and every business owner chooses to maximize the height, your street edge, you know, you lose the architecture of the buildings because they're covered by signage. We just need to be mindful of it. And what we've done in the existing draft ordinance was really address how the perfect form of the buildings would correspond to the signage, from the street dimensions, the speed of the vehicles, the way that the pedestrians interact with the signs. The signage is there to inform you what's coming next if you're walking down sidewalks, right? If you're looking at hanging signs or projection signs. And these are the different types of signs, I apologize, it's kind of small again, I thought we were sitting around a table. This is the different types of signs that we started to bring back in the code. One's simply an address sign. And the square footage would, would correspond with the building types, right? And so you have awning, awning signs, band signs. Old buildings had sign bands that were built into the facade of the buildings and it's where the signs go. And so, you know, they, they need to be put in, in that place. Blade signs are the ones that come out from the front facade, out over the sidewalks. And then you have marquee signs where you have movie theaters. Let me see, I can zoom in on this actually. Oh, yes, this does work. Yeah, it is, I apologize. This is a marquee sign that goes out over the sidewalk and so you'll see these at movie theaters and those types of things. So those would be integrated in. And then you have window signage, which would be allowed for when, you know, businesses to advertise on their windows. Yard signs, which would be allowed for B and Bs or businesses in house form retail. So they've had a yard sign, that's the style of signage. These are for nameplate signs for multi-tenant buildings that would be placed, these are called outdoor display cases so they could advertise at the street edge, blade signs, and then sidewalk signs or A-frame signs that are out in the right-of-way. The other types of signs are pylon signs and pole signs. As the built environment achieves B three, as, as the code gets built out and as new development occurs, these will become less and less prevalent because the built environment doesn't, is not necessarily conducive to these in all places. On Highway seventy-nine, on Highway one fifty, Highway ninety-five, there may be a modification of this sign type that should be allowed or, and this is, these are policy questions and policy conversations and decisions. We'd love your input into, as we go toward council. The current draft allows for the same type of signage along seventy-one. Thirty-five feet pylon signs would, would continue to be allowed because that's the type of sign you need to communicate with the passerbyers of the traffic. That's, that's what is in place. And as that environment stays, that's the type of signage you'd get. Is the height appropriate? Again, as I stated, once that sign's there, it's there for a long time. And so just imagine that you have a continuation of businesses happening along that area. Is this the appropriate scale? Is it the appropriate materials? For example, some cities require that the pylon sign be encased in stone. You just increase the cost exponentially. Is the cost that you increase, you know, representative of the outputs that you're getting back? Those types of conversations are really important, but these are coding elements that you could have happen. And sometimes those types of requirements code out cool funky signs. And so signage is, is really difficult because it's something that is opinion-based. I think that sign looks great. I think that signs, you know, sign clutter, for example. And so it's, what we're trying to do is integrate how the signs would build out in the long term. We have that solved through your sign code. To the scale, the massing, the place, the placement, the information necessary to communicate to the public, to the, both the drivers and pedestrians, walkers, bikers, that's been addressed. It's these transition signs that we would like to have a conversation about. And again, what we've done to this point is written in, pylon signs would be allowed on Highway seventy-one. Should they or might they be allowed on Highway ninety-five or one fifty? Or would monument signs be more appropriate? These are multi-tenant pylon signs or, or tall monument signs. And so you can see on the left, they probably required that everyone use white lettering, right? And so these types of signs are necessary, particularly when you have commercial development done in strip centers, because you have multi-tenants and they're all trying to advertise to one audience and a, in one type of platform, if you will. So how these get addressed and where they're appropriate is, is really a, a big conversation. So the current sign ordinance allows for a hundred and sixty square feet of signage. This is your current ordinance. And the sign structure can be two hundred and forty square feet, height can be thirty-five feet, which is almost three stories, and you're allowed one per lot. And the spacing can be every one hundred feet from the next sign. So that's the way that, that it currently is written. And so what we'd like to talk about is, you know, should it be based off of, you know, miles per hour, distance from the roadway? If you remember your existing sign ordinance, you kind of have to go through an algebra equation in order to calculate it. And maybe there is something to that, right? During this transitional time period where maybe that actually could work, where you're calculating the miles per hour, the distance from the roadway, the, the dimension of the front facade, to come up with something that seems somewhat logical, right? Something, something that has at least landed in theory of why the sign's size is the way that it is. And so, you know, how many should be, how many should be allowed? You know, what type would they be allowed? These are conversations we'd like to just start as thought-provoking questions.
I'd just like to point out a couple of things and get some input from P and Z on. So the, the idea behind the whole seventy-five foot sign on a highway was based off the need to have your signage seen to get off of an exit prior to the fancy invention of GPS and the iPhone. So before that day, you literally had to see the sign a mile off to be able to exit in time to get to your destination. Well, with the invention of the GPS and your iPhone telling you exactly where to go without looking, you know, further down the road, is it critical to continue that pattern of signage? That's something to think about. The other thing is, we're still kind of researching and looking at the effects of this, but the Texas Legislature passed House Bill twenty-four thirty-nine that says that cities cannot regulate building materials if they're allowed in international code. So think about what that means for si, or could mean for signage. So we could say you could have a fifty-foot sign, we cannot say that it has to be stone or that it has to be LED lit or that it has to be this. So the, the effects of that bill, we're still researching and, and working through with our, our attorney and our staff team. But does that bill mean that somebody could literally build a fifty-foot tall sign made out of plywood? Because plywood's an allowable- Because plywood's an allowable building material in the I-code. So we're still kind of looking at that, but it's certainly something to keep in mind, and as we progress through this, keep in the back of your mind when we're taking a look at the signage standards, so.
Hey, Matt, really quickly, just, as a matter of kind of context, remember where we are, because it was, the city was always run a bit uniquely when it came to signs over the last few years. I think it was just up until a year ago or two years ago that, actually, the Board of Adjustments handled all sign review as the Municipal Sign Review Board. And that was semi-judicial, unlike their other procedures, in which if something didn't pass, it could be. So I guess this board hasn't had a whole lot to do really over time with a lot of the sign stuff. I know we discussed recently limiting the number of, well, not building more signs, but also maybe swapping out some pylon signs for, you know, digital signs or conversations of that type. And I know we've always had a fairly restrictive kind of sign code, the way it was written last time. We hear experts from time to time telling us how we're not like Austin and how restrictive it is. But where, I mean, I guess when you talk about, you know, like miles per hour, things like that, I've been, like I said, with the Sign Review Board, I've been dealing with this for five years. And I really, I mean, I'm no expert in it. I don't understand how speed affects it. I do understand what you're saying as far as the idea that with the GPS, people aren't looking for those signs on the road as much. They're following their phone, you know, hopefully not rear-ending the person in front of them, which is kind of the same problem with looking up at the signs. But at least it talks to you through your radio or through your stereo. But anyway, I don't know, I just, when it comes to sign, I really see us getting swamped in a bunch of technical detail that we don't know much about. And so just as far as going forward with it, absolutely, we want a good sign code. I think everyone wants something that looks good. We don't know how this new, how the I-codes will affect all this with the new state law. But I do believe a fair amount of education, at least on a specific point, is gonna be, because otherwise you're just gonna get what do you think, you know, rather than what's good for the city. And, you know, and so everyone's got an opinion, and I always good opinions, and so I just want to make sure, especially on this topic, that whatever we are being asked, that we're informed rather than making recommendations that we don't quite understand the implications of.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. I think, I don't know if we have restrictive sign regulations. I know we have a lot of sign regulations, but in terms of globally, I would say our sign regulations are not very restrictive. For example, like the Woodlands north of Houston, you won't see a single pylon sign in the entire city. And surprisingly enough, people can still make it to Chick-fil-A. So I think we accommodate things, and again, it doesn't mean you cannot do it. It means if it's not prescribed in this code, then they just have to have a conversation with P&amp;Z or council. So this is kind of, again, it's trying to remove, excuse me, remove some of the review time. So that's why we're taking this journey today, is to walk through this and say, guys, this is what you can go do. This is your playbook. We like these things. If you're following these things, you need not come talk to us. Just get it approved through staff administratively in the DRC and have fun. It's when they deviate from this that they would have to have, come and have that conversation versus everything having to go through a border commission to get approval.
Well, Matt, on that, in that regard, I know you, one of the things that we're trying to do is make the review process smoother and quicker.
Yes, ma'am.
But like the other Matt said, once these signs are approved, they're there until my unborn grandchild graduates with his or her PhD.
Absolutely.
Or later. So if they're gonna be there for a few generations, maybe they, we need to pause at times.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, you go to Hilton Head, you go to the Woodlands, you go, you say, people get places.
Right.
And just look at the conglomeration we have on Highway 71, and just look at a denial that the Board of Adjustments made on a huge sign. That was overwritten by the City Council and put in place there, and it's there forever. So, I mean, if we need to take a little bit of time to review what we're gonna allow, and after you find out how restrictive we can be, maybe if not on the materials that it'll use, at least the colors, or, you know, do we do digital? We, it only begun that conversation when that was put on hold for a while. So this may not seem like it's a super big deal, but when you look at what we got on 71, and we've got a lot of new development coming, I think this is gonna be important to the way our city looks for generations to come with the building that I see on the horizon.
Absolutely.
To that point also, and your point, Matt, it's critical when we set whatever the standards are gonna be and what we decide, or what the city decides, to be consistent with that, because if people are gonna come up wanting variances all the time, we allow it, then we have no codes that are being followed. So I think it's critical to be very mindful of that. And also going back to Debbie's point on the process, the permitting application, that's really complicated. I, someone called me the other day to please help me fill out this, it's pretty complic-, so simplifying things will be awesome, too.
We, I know all of our staff would be in favor of simplifying those calculations, even with the iPhone calculator. So kind of speaking to the Highway 71, do you all as a commission think it's appropriate to continue to allow the, you know, 50 to 75 to 100-foot signs along 71? Are those appropriate?
I would say if we don't want to find out what a 75-foot plywood sign looks like, that we just not allow 75-foot signs. I'd rather find out what a five-foot plywood sign looks like, rather than a 75-foot one.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, no, the next sign type may be something that you want to discuss, monument signs. And these are good transitional sign types that are not pylon. I'm not kicking you out, Matt. I just wanted to introduce these to them so that you all could have this as part of the conversation. B caves, for example, they don't allow anything but monument signs. HEB, every, and you still can navigate, as we're stating that. And so monument signs are generally affixed at ground level. They usually have either a solid base or two poles. They can be brick, stone, but as Matt stated, that, you know, the new state law would prohibit us from regulating materials. But these are pylon signs, and so maybe something like this may be a good interim fix. So anyhow, I just wanted to introduce those types to you all as you start that conversation.
I think the other thing, anything about is that could somebody do a plywood, sure, they could, but they're not going to. Doesn't make, doesn't make sense. So I guess the question would be is, when we start considering, you know, pylon signs, what types of materials would they want that we don't already allow? You know, what types of, what types of materials currently are restricted from pylon signs or signage in general that could be allowed that would still be usable? And, you know, is it really that bad? You know, because maybe you put a 75-foot sign up in the air with made of plywood, it becomes a nuisance or, you know, a danger to the, you know, people around it, and the city's gonna shut it down anywhere, make them take it down, not because it's made of plywood, but because it's dangerous.
Right.
So I guess my question would be is, what types of materials do we not currently allow for types, you know, for pylon signs that would be used if we no longer were able to restrict them? Or the people that have come into planning and development and said, hey, I want to make a pylon sign out of, you know?
PVC.
Paul, would you have a question?
Jennifer, I don't know what materials we'd currently exclude in pylon signs.
Pylon signs are typically, they, some developments have requirements that the base of the sign has to be stone, but mostly they're metal, metal and vinyl.
So we don't really prohibit anything specifically?
Yeah, they're metal currently for pylon signs. Now monument signs have more restrictions with masonry and.
But we're not, we're not gonna be able to do that, and regardless of the sign type, we're not gonna be able to say what kind. So it's, the question of pylon is not, you know, it's more a question of the height versus what it's made out of, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So the plywood thing is, is.
You need to be focused on more of what it, well, not what it looks like, because that is materials, but architecturally, what is appropriate for the city of Bastrop versus materials? Because it looks like we're not going to be able to regulate materials, so architecturally, what should our signs look like in the city of Bastrop?
What would be a maximum height that a monument sign, I mean, could it be as high as you wanted it to?
Oh, absolutely. So I think there was a group, so for example, the one on the left there technically could be classified as a monument sign. It's probably, what'd you say, 35-foot tall-ish? So really, you can build anything. You just have to build it right.
I mean, if you could have a 50-foot monument sign and it makes sense, then it might make sense to just say, all right, you know, we'll get rid of everything else. And that, if you have a high-speed roadway, that's, you know, it's gotta be something like that, because it's nicer to look at and it's, you know.
And usually when you get that tall with the monument sign, it's incorporating architectural design from the actual primary structure. So it might be like a tower-esque looking, or a, like a silo or something that they then build into like a sign that incorporates that kind of architectural feeling into it. But certainly, I mean, really, as long as it's built well, which the I-codes will regulate that it's built well, you know, you could really go pretty tall. And again, it's just, what do we think as a city is the appropriate height for signage in the city?
With that idea in mind, it would make sense to just get rid of pylon signs altogether, because they're not pretty, and these are much nicer. And since we can't regulate materials going forward anyway, you know, something like this would require probably a little more aesthetically pleasing versus just a tall metal pole with a square on top of it.
Over at Burleson Crossing, they have that monument sign for all the businesses there. And Lowe's doesn't have a huge pylon sign advertising. It seems to work, so.
Yeah, so maybe getting away, well, so having more group signage than individual. Are y'all in agreement on that?
Is there anybody that thinks pylon signs should be allowed, or?
No, I don't see a reason for it. I mean, on visits to the outlet malls in San Marcos, I've literally used my phone to find a store that I was looking for in there. So, you know, signage, I think, is one of those things that we just kind of hang on to from the past that isn't nearly as necessary as it once was.
I just have one thing I want to add. If you have a business, like say you have a nightclub, or you have acts that change out maybe every weekend, how would you handle that information on a marquee?
Yeah, changeable message. It could, it could be digital, or it could be the, you know, the changeable letters with the, you know, the old-school suction cup, and somebody's out there changing them, or it could be digital.
Do we have a consensus on pylon signs to send Matt back with? Because I know he likes that consensus.
I love that consensus, thank you.
Well, you're talking about, we're talking about just pylons, and we're not talking about height at the moment, or size.
That's correct. We're talking about type.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not ready to make a decision on height or size.
Pylon signs out?
Pylon out.
Are we?
Pylon out.
Dunzies, there you go.
Eighty-six on pylon signs, gotcha.
And the issue of digital, we haven't even addressed that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, more and more people like the digital.
Not the people I heard from when we talked about it before.
Do what, I'm sorry?
I said, not the people I heard from, they didn't like the, even when we discussed it briefly.
Yeah. Well, the development community, I will say, likes digital signage, just from several standpoints. But what is the, if we, if you allow digital signs, what's the appropriate? You know, you don't want them changing every so often on heavily, or the higher the speed, you want it static for longer versus scrolling to where it will take your, take your attention away from the roadway. So those are the types to think about if you do allow the digital.
Just to clarify, and maybe I'm misremembering, which is entirely possible, did we talk about digital signs? Or we talked about digital billboards? Because I feel like we talked about digital billboards, which was, which is a totally different conversation, in my opinion, than digital signage.
We talked about mainly about digital billboards, but signs were following behind it, and we didn't really get.
I just remember, I remember the conversation being like, here's a humongous billboard, all digital, versus like, here's a, here's a, one of these signs with some like, you know, digital changing on the top.
Well, that was my question as well. Is this the same conversation as the billboard sign, or these two separate conversations?
They're dealt with separately, so this would be more towards.
We're not talking about billboards right now. We're talking about monument signs that will have some kind of digital.
Yes, sir. Not off-site advertising, but we're talking about on, you know, on-premise.
Yeah, the previous discussion had been specifically on digital billboards, converting the existing ones to digital, so. But there has been a lot of discussion in the last probably decade in the city of Bastrop on digital signage in general. So currently, there are a lot of restrictions on the digital signage. Can't be more than 25% of your total sign face, and has to, can't change more than every eight or nine seconds. Can't scroll, can't flash, has to dim at night. So those are, that's what's in the code today, so.
Those all sound like very good things to keep.
So.
That sounds like it.
Pending further research, I guess, you know, I think you had some written comments by Commissioner Lee. One thing that she addressed was neon. Do you, if you can, do you prohibit neon?
Or if we can, do we allow neon? Because I think neon's fantastic.
Neon's fantastic, all right.
Commissioner Lee, I think that Bastrop's trying to revitalize this old-school feeling with the downtown zero setbacks. I think of the movie Cars with everyone fixes their neon and how beautiful the downtown was at the end of the movie. Of course, that's a bit cinematic and romantic, maybe in nature, but I think there's a nice feel to the neon when done right. And I guess it's just up to, hopefully, people do it right.
Yeah.
And when, in your idea, when you think of neon, are you thinking large neons, you know, neon in a window or over a door? What do you, I mean?
I would think relatively large scale. I mean, pile.
So open sign versus.
Blade signs, blade signs being neon, kind of ideas where there was.
Are you thinking like, this kind of sign with neon on it? Or?
I don't really see that working necessarily. More like individual shop owner advertising on the shop rather than on the road.
Smaller scale.
So I will say, in the past, when you start regulating and prohibiting, you can really start to cut down on the creativity of some signs. One that I have dealt with in the past is Hard Ate Barbecue. They have this, it's a neon sign. It's their primary sign. And it's tastefully done. It looks excellent. You know, it's no brighter than any other sign. And it really kind of brings some character and some charm to downtown or main streets or other. So it's just something to keep in mind. As you, the more regulation you have, the less creativity and flexibility you have to kind of build these spaces. So you might unintentionally prohibit something that would otherwise be very nice and add some charm to a neighborhood.
Right, I guess I would like to see what we're talking about, potentially, number one. And number two, I don't think in 1832 they had neon signs. So if we want to keep the feel of old town, downtown Bastrop, is that appropriate?
Yeah.
I just want to see it before I say I'm in favor of it.
In my mind, I think that small, small business, either a blade sign in the window, you know, something like that is more appropriate. But to have, you know, a 50-foot monument sign off the side of the highway with neon incorporated into it, I think is not. I mean, at that point, as you drive down 71, it's, you know, light here, light here, and I think it just, there should be some consistency there.
It's like Las Vegas Strip.
Exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking.
So maybe the appropriate regulation is neon is okay on wall signage. So different types of wall application, but not on standalone signs.
I mean, those signs in the windows are like this.
Yeah, but would it be appropriate and would it be a problem if you have these band signs and instead of channel-cut aluminum letters, you have neon?
I don't, I don't think so.
You don't think so, okay.
And any, for me personally, any of this signage right here, right, that's on the business or fixed to the business or something like that, I don't have a problem with neon there at all. What I'm more worried about is adding neon to some of our other sign types where, you know, you, you know, it just doesn't make sense.
Building or wall signage neon might be appropriate, but on a standalone sign out front, maybe not.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily against it, but I'm just, I don't have enough information. I want to see it. I want to see what it would look like.
Okay. We'll try to get some examples. But again, this might be a moot point. If we, I know neon's allowed under the international code, so again, I'm not sure if we can even regulate it. so again, I'm, I'm not sure if we can even regulate it, but if we can, this is a conversation that we, that we owe ourselves to have. Um, but again, this was just passed a, a week ago or so, we're still trying to figure out how it affects us. Um, you know, it was, uh, the law came into effect because, um, somebody didn't want cities, uh, requiring people to use Acme Brick and because of that, uh, they said we cannot allow or regulate building materials if it's acceptable under the, um, international code, so, um, again, we're still looking at it, um, we may not be able to do anything about it, but if we can, this is certainly a good conversation to have, uh, in terms of moving forward.
Uh, I was gonna say, could you restrict it on signs of a certain size, would that be, if it's determined to be a building material, then it's irrelevant?
That's correct, yeah, again, like we need.
I'd like to have some input from maybe the Historical Society or Landmark Commission about neon downtown in the old historic areas.
So in the tw, the twenty-four thirty-nine makes an exception for historical districts. So anything in a historical district still has that regul, regulation of building materials, uh, that is one area that it still applies to.
Okay.
So the Historic Landmarks Commission, anything outside of bounds, um, I, I, actually, I believe anything on the outside of the building uh, goes to them for approval, so they would still have that today, moving forward.
For signs or building materials?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Would it be for, they would have to review it for signs and/or building materials?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
Any change to exterior facade goes through HLC, I know a couple of businesses recently that moved into downtown had to go to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Okay.
So we, they did leave that, uh, condition in there that cities can still, uh, regulate building materials in historic districts. So these are, these are a no-no, that's a no-no, we like these. Neon, uh, we're gonna have a little bit more conversation on, um, might be just for, for fun, uh, but, uh, we'll have that conversation. Anything else, I mean, clearly, we're not gonna have them in site triangles, clearly, they still have some regulations, but, um, do y'all have any other comments when reviewing the language or anything that, uh, we need to have a discussion about? What about, uh, temporary signs, uh, banners, uh, wavy men, are those things that we like or no?
For an opening or an event or something like that, that's up for a few days, I don't see a problem with that.
Well, question on that is, I know that, you know, with our sign code, I, I feel is actually where Harbor Freight is. I remember one time they applied for a large sign to go there, they got denied. And it may not have been Harbor Freight, it could've been someone else, but in the meantime, the owner of the building, you know, put it up for lease with a massive banner sign that was easily, you know, out of compliance with any size requirements, you know, that a, a fixed sign would be and I just kinda felt it was kinda funny that, you know, for a permanent shop with a tasteful sign, we had it so small, our regulations, but yet for temporary advertising, this thing was, you know, was, was quite massive and was there for a few months, you know, saying, you know, area for lease, so I mean, I guess that's maybe the question we're having right now, but absolutely, I mean, I think it deserves having a question, whether we deserve, whether, how long we leave some kind of banner sign up and I don't know if we have to, you know, look at size of it, but maybe time is just required, but yeah, there had, seems to be some inconsistency with how we advertise our businesses.
And how we define temporary.
Yeah. Could, could that not be fixed with requiring like a permit for temporary signage?
We, we do require that today, um.
So if I wanted, so if I have a business and I wanna put wavy men out front for a weekend bash, you, there's a permit process for that?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's a difference on banners too, because you can have temporary banners, but you can also have a banner on a building that advertises things about your business that I don't see what's wrong with that too, as long as the perspective is right on the side of the building.
Yeah, so that would fall under like a window sign, you know, you could have things inside of your window promoting, but that's much different than having a, you know, twenty-nine ninety-nine cellphone repair stuck in your front yard every ten feet, so. Uh, which is more appropriate and which do we want, or do we care?
And technically on temporary signage, we don't allow wavy men or those flutter flags, it's just, we haven't had a lot of time to enforce lately, so.
That would be, that would be my other, that would be my other question is, is who do we have on Saturday that's driving around, you know, I mean, are we, do we have somebody doing code enforcement, do we want our officers, no, we don't, but, you know, who's, who's supposed to enforce the wavy men?
Dedicated staff, we have a part-time code enforcement and she's also animal control, uh, so that's the only dedicated staff we have to it. Um, however, we're all code officials, um, so out driving around, if it's in the rideaway, for example, it's not supposed to be there and we can pick that up, um, but in terms of dedicated staff, it's, it's really a part-time code enforcement. Uh, but she's also dealing with life safety issues with high weeds and grass, mosquitoes, junk cars, that, that type of thing and so really it's a, um, it, it's a, it's, it's an issue, um, but, uh, that's not to say that we shouldn't have the proper regulations. Um, and, and that's an administration function that if that's the standard that the city wants, then we just have to staff appropriately.
Could, could we not start with a base where any temporary sign has like a seventy-two hour limit on it and, and start with a base like that and amend as, as we go, or is that not make, is that too broad?
That's, uh, that's, that's, to be quite honest, that'd be very difficult for us to enforce. Um, seventy-two hours, you're talking about, uh, a lot of tracking, not just internally, but then we have to go drive by and see if it's gone every third day, if it's over the weekend, um, so you.
What's the penalty for violating that?
Uh, you could get a zoning, uh, violation letter, um, and it would go to the court and then the judge would have, um, the discretion uh, to set that fine not to exceed five hundred, not to exceed five hundred dollars.
But the thing on the seventy-two hours, there's different applications, because if you have a for-lease sign out on a banner on your business, you sure want it out there more than seventy-two hours.
So residential, um, for-lease types of those things are generally exempt completely.
What about commercial?
Commercial for sale?
Like, like, for example, this, I, I will tell you from my day-to-day business that we don't need a sign, like the one Matt's talking about on the side of the.
Same real estate, it's exempt.
So, so a large temporary commercial sign that's, is, is exempt?
For sale?
For sale, for lease, I, I, I'm specifically thinking of the one that Matt's thinking of that was on the outside of the building.
It was definitely a for-lease sign, they were trying to re-lease the premises, but the idea was that, you know, I don't think it was Harbor Freight, but they're in there now, but whoever was trying to go in there obviously wanted a large permanent sign that was denied to advertise their business, but then when that fell through, the tenant didn't occupy the space, we immediately allowed the owner of the premises to advertise their business quite amply with a much less tasteful, you know, uh, banner sign, you know, for, for as long as it took to get him to make his money and take his sign down and, you know, have Harbor Freight build their sign, so there's two different people trying to make business money off this site. One, since they permanently occupy the site or under one set of restrictions, but since another one was just trying to lease the site and didn't necessarily, it was temporary, it's like, well, it could be there for a week, it could be there for a year, we don't know. It's like, well, yeah, sure, you don't buy a permanent sign for that, and, you know, they're allowed to kind of.
I'm not.
Do what a lot of permanent owners would like to do is put cheap signage up.
I'm not advertising, we try to be like the colony where you can have a for-sale sign, you know, by your front door and that's it. But at this, or in the city at all, but what I am talking about is, is, is commercial where you can have a, you know, for-sale or for-lease sign, which is, is obscenely large and not needed in the industry and is ridiculous to continue to put them up. So restricting those types of signs, temporary signage, I think, you know, is an extended period, the seventy-two hours for me is, I'm not necessarily advocating we track, but if we notice that the wavy men are up and they've been up for five or six days and we can, you know, attest to that or somebody can attest to that, then you can go in there, pull them down or horse side them, I'm not necessarily advocating somebody drive around and go, okay, wavy men there, this date and time, wavy men there, this date and time, and, you know, flag sign, I'm, I'm just saying that it's used for when there's an obvious violation or an obvious, you know, overuse of something, uh, that was my thought.
But obvious kinda gets to be a judgmental kinda thing too, and if there's not uniform, if there's not uniform enforcement of a regulation, then it can't be enforced legally, that's my understanding, so it's, I don't have a problem with wavy men, but how do we, I'm, I'm not sure how we set the limits.
Well, I think it's, if you notice it, it's there or it's a, you know, if somebody complains, it's there, it's kinda like our code enforcement orders.
Based on the number of complaints is kind of how you.
Code enforcement for the most part is, you know, they, they drive around, they try to find, you know, things or see things, but a lot of it's driven by, you know, hey, my neighbor's grass hasn't been mowed in six weeks and, you know, there's snakes and all kinds of other stuff, can you do something about that? It's more complaint-driven.
I guess it kinda goes back to the idea of a curfew as well, I mean, the curfew is there to kinda help enforce stuff, it's not necessarily, I mean, it's there to help out the officers when there's something needs to be done, is there a similar kind of idea with the city of, you know, it could be used in this sense, where like you said, it's not necessarily, it's more when we need it, what's there and maybe it's based on number of complaints and sure, not every nuisance is, is as complaint-worthy as the next, but those that do get complained about need attention.
A, a key, something to think about is, we're not saying we don't want you to advertise your business, but we're saying if you want to advertise your business, this is appropriate instead of maybe a wavy man, so if you allow wavy men, you would allow a wavy man at every business on Main Street, uh, walking up and down the street, is, is that appropriate or is that appropriate? Uh, it's two very different feelings and if I'm want, wanting to walk downtown and have a coffee and then maybe go, you know, to, uh, go shop or something, do I wanna walk in and dodge the, the wavy man or is, you know, a sandwich board more appropriate?
Since ninety-five's the state, I mean, uh, Chestnut's the State Highway, could we regulate wavy men there?
Well, right now, we do regulate them, we don't, we don't allow them.
I think a wavy man there would be a lot less objectionable than a wavy man downtown.
I like to, maybe I was misunderstanding, we're picking on wavy men, but we're, I thought we were talking about temporary signage.
We are.
So that's, so.
I just like the term wavy men.
I think, I'm right there with you, I just, I just wanna make sure that, so my thought is, you know, how do we regulate temporary signage? And we do, we do so, I think, it, there has to be a time limit on it, because, you know, if temporarys, you know.
What I heard originally was grand openings and/or, you know, if you're having a blowout sale, for example, maybe you can have a temporary signage for thirty days to advertise that, um, maybe like three or four times a year, I don't know the appropriateness, but is that?
And we're excluding real estate signs like for lease or sale in that?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, those would be allowed.
All of them?
I believe, I believe that's how the code.
My recommendation would be to still place limits on commercial for-sale and for-lease signs.
I have a big problem with that, a huge problem, because look at Main Street, all the vacant buildings and as, as an owner of a building on Main Street, having it vacant over a year, if I have a limit on how long I can have my sign out there for lease, that's restricting my ability to.
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not advocating restricting temporary signage, I'm advocating, I'm advocating restricting the type and size of temporary signage for, I can, I can, real estate broker, what I do every day, there's no need to have humongous signs on the sides of buildings because, you know, most buildings are leased by somebody randomly driving through our town on seventy-one and looking off to the side and going, oh, it's a building that I could lease, it's.
And I agree, the perspective should be right for the building, so I agree on the perspective.
So I, so, you know, it would, would be no different to me if somebody were to take, you know, go, you know, my house over here and put up a four-foot by eight-foot, you know, post sign, you know, for-sale sign in the yard, the city would probably come and say, hey, not really an appropriate size sign for your yard, um, and although it's a for-sale or for-lease sign, it would probably still, you know, draw the attention of code enforcement, I would guess, so, you know, same thing for commercial real estate, the, the signage should be restricted.
Now, they're exempt today, but they still have size restrictions, so like a residential can't be more than sixteen square feet, for example. So they're still restricted in size, um.
Com, commercial real estate too?
Commercial real, that's for non-residential.
Okay.
Here, would you come up with that?
The way that the code is written currently, the draft B-three code, we have four feet for residential and sixteen square feet for commercial, is the way that the code is written now, um.
Oh, sixteen square feet might be a little too small.
Four by four.
For, for, that's, 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 that's pretty small.
Well, so, I mean, they're just saying, that's, that's the way that it's currently drafted.
For, for, for all signage or for just for?
Uh, for, no, this is for real, real estate.
Okay.
Uh, for sale, but they're, they're exempted other than the size.
So you don't have to have a permit, but you have to have it restricted on size.
I would say a four-by-eight sign is more reasonable for.
Okay.
Commercial real estate size sign.
Okay, and so that we can just code that in, that's, that's one modification that we could change.
Do we all agree, eight by four? Alright, for commercial, what about residential, eight by four, okay?
That, that sixteen, that sixteen square feet would make more sense.
Sixteen, okay. Eight by four. Can it have neon? I'm just kidding.
Yes, lots of it. It flashes all night long.
Yeah.
Only on Sprint Street.
That's, that's right.
So, um, we can bring back some examples of neon signage and how it's used, um, in larger scale, I think we all know what it looks like for open signs and such, but we'll try to do a little bit of research and bring back some examples on how that might, you know, fall into a, a wall sign or roof sign or other. Uh, anything else on, do you want anything else on signs, anything else that, that we're missing? Okay, excellent.
Okay, before we move on, is everybody okay, you wanna take a ten-minute break? You okay?
Alright, uh, so the next topic for discussion is tree preservation. So you all, um, before my arrival, did some pretty extensive work on tree preservation, uh, when it was a part of the subdivision, uh, regulations. Um, so what we did is we provided.
And there was a draft tree code before this.
Before this one as well, okay.
That did not go very far.
Did not go very far, well, this one still didn't make it over the finish line, uh, it's still in draft form, uh, but what we wanted to do is just provide that to you all, I think most of you were on the board, some of you were not, uh, so what we did is we provided, uh, the draft regulations that were a part of the subdivision recommendations that you all worked extensively on, um, just as a, as a starting point, uh, for discussion. Um, so I thought I would just kinda go through that, uh, with you all and then see if we're still in a good place and then tweak it where we need to and, uh, have some, have some discussions, uh, so essentially, uh, the, the tree preservation ordinance, um, applies to any development, uh, in the, in the city of Bastrop and/or our ETJ, statutory ETJ, so our one-mile ETJ, um, with a few exemptions, so, um, uh, section D there lists those exemptions, uh, some of them are like projects in, in progress, so we would not go to Piccon Park, for example, after this is adopted and say, you shall now comply with our tree preservation ordinance. Um, a, a couple other, uh, uh, any residential property that's less than one acre, uh, so if you're a, a homestead and you're under one acre, um, this does not apply to you.
Well, real quick, as we move on, I would recommend we take that one and move it to the very top of the exemption list.
Just reorder it?
I know that sounds silly, but the, the, the biggest thing we always dealt with was people being like, well, we're not Austin and, you know, if you wanna cut down a tree in your yard, then go ahead and cut it down, but I just wanna, I think putting it at the very top makes it very clear that if somebody reads through it, they can read what, if it applies to them.
First thing they see, cause it applies to most people who are trying to read it, got it, that's excellent.
It's just a thought.
Can I get a clarification on that, is that, uh, exempt, that it doesn't, it doesn't mean heritage trees or protected trees can be cut down?
Any, anything on your single-family lot can be cut down?
Under one acre. Yes, you could, as it's written.
If it's, if it's, if it's, and we, we, we've had this back and forth a lot, that.
Why would we do that?
That we didn't, that we didn't want to restrict somebody's private property rights, so we bet, we spent a lot of time on it and eventually came down to that if it's your single-family residence and it's, it's under one acre, then yes, you could cut down every tree on your lot if you wanted to, whether it's a thousand years old or, you know, a month old, it's your property, you could do what you want with it. If it's not a single family or it's bigger than one acre.
And I, I wasn't part of that discussion, but did, there's something, an urban forestry, do we have any of that, how does that, I mean, if everybody and their property did that, we wouldn't have any trees in Bastrop.
Which, which is true, I mean, it would be unlikely, but yes, that, that would be possible.
We're saying that's okay.
That's what we came down to, it's, it's that balance between private property rights and unless.
How, on the commission then, and maybe you're bringing up a good point about that, maybe we do need to think about that.
I just think there's something called heritage trees, we have lob lollies and they're, we got a bunch of them that were burned down. I think we need to put lob lolly, you can't cut one down, and I think an oak tree, if it's greater than, and, you know, it takes it a while to get that big, so it's gonna be a hundred years, I just think, we're saying it's okay, they're gonna do it. And I saw that happen to a site on Hill Street, that's the reason I got involved, they cut every tree down on a hundred-year-old house. They cut every tree down on a hundred year old house and there were some very large trees, but they could do it.
We're gonna try to pull up, um, I think we have some numbers on how many lots, like in the downtown area that was studied for the DNA analysis, just as an example. This are how many lots downtown that would have zero restrictions, uh, as far as trees. But, um, it's a, it's a very good talking point. And, and it's something to consider, 'cause most, well, I won't even say most, but, um, a lot of your single family residential lots, uh, are less than one acre. Um, and something else to think about now with the B three codes is we're not gonna regulate lot size. Okay? So, uh, that's something to think about when you're, when you have this one acre lot minimum for, for no restrictions is how does that apply moving forward when we, when we don't regulate lots?
Yeah, I have a very small lot in town and I have a cypress tree that's probably close to two hundred feet tall. You know, I'll, somebody might, the next owner may not like it because it throws all its needles and it's a real pain in the butt in the wintertime, but it would be a crime in my opinion to cut that tree down, you know?
Well, and I think also, um, just the very nature of Bastrop, I mean, we have trees in our logo, you know, we're the lost pines, you know, and what happens when you don't preserve that? Uh, I think, you know, a, a big talking point on these codes is authentic Bastrop and preserving the ge, geography and, um, being geographically sensitive. So I'm not saying that one acre's wrong, um, but are, are collectively, are we still good with one acre?
Well, the, the one acre, you know, right or wrong, I guess, the conversation framed more about, A, property rights, this is an individual, what should you be able to do with your property that you own in the state of Texas? But the converse argument of that was, well, what are we gonna allow developers to do when they come in? And they, they take up a four hundred acre area, they just clear cut everything and go forward. That was where I think the majority of the conversation was spent with, was how do we control, you know, people that don't own their property or don't own it for the purpose of residing on it? You know, and so I think that when you look at that, it's like, okay, well, someone coming in looking to sell and make money and move on, there, there's one criteria versus someone who does have a homestead exemption on their property, they do live on the property and they have a reasonable right to use that property the way that they should be able to use it. So, I mean, one acre, this or that, homestead exemption, I see it much more reasonable in the sense that I just agree that.
The one acre was just meant to make sure as many property, property owners are included. I mean, it's, it's large, it was large, I think, because we decided, you know, that gives everybody that has their home, 'cause there's not many lots inside the city of Bastrop that have lots over one acre. And so that, that was the idea, was to include as many homeowners as possible.
And so the idea is just like a homestead exemption, like I own and I reside? That's one set of standards versus someone who owns and rents or owns and is gonna sell, you know, six hundred units down the road.
Yeah, so, uh, um, also another point to point out now in our, in our process, development process, and we'll speak a little bit more about this next time. But we will put all of that information on the front hand. Uh, so instead of just being able to come and plat, you know, six hundred residential lots without looking at trees or groves of trees, that's something that we will require on the forehand. So if there's a, you know, a grove of oak trees or, uh, lob lolly pines, for example, um, we will take a look at that before the development is laid out and how they can incorporate those trees into their site development plan. Um, so instead of looking at it on the back end, we'll look at that on the forehand.
Well, I also, I mean, I think specifically where the colony is, I think it's the colony is expanding across nine, six, nine, over by the river, you look at that, they've obviously preserved many large, beautiful trees and they've incorporated into, you know, the way they've at least done their roads. I guess when houses go up, I guess that could be a, a second culling of trees in the area. But, but, you know, I think there's a certain amount of builders that build just with the intent of knowing that trees are valuable and there's certain amounts that don't.
No, there's, there's statistical data that trees are valuable, there are economic benefit, uh, to a community. Um, also environmental, there's, you know, clearly, uh, the, the benefit, uh, of, of the trees. Uh, but not just, uh, environmental, but there's a, there's, it's a known fact that trees are a benefit economically to a community. Um, especially in Texas, especially when you're talking about building a walkable, bikeable community, it's not gonna happen if you don't have trees. You gotta have shade, you gotta feel welcomed, um, it's just a fact. Um, so I, I think, um, you know, we can spend a lot of time on the one acre, um.
I, I just wanna remind everybody that it takes, it's gonna take those lob lolly trees twenty, minimum of twenty-six to thirty years to get back to what we lost in two thousand and eleven. It takes nothing to cut down a tree. I think we just need to think about certain trees you just can't touch, even if it's a tiny lot and that's what we're here to look out for, the worst case scenario, not the best case. And I think if we're gonna put this forward, I would say that's why you have a heritage tree.
And it kinda goes back to a community value. You know, we, we talked about that with the nuisances, but what does this community, what is the value of the, the natural environment to this city? And again, uh, the P and Z commission kind of acts as your tree board and we're not saying you can't cut it down, but we're saying if you want to, you gotta come and have a conversation. Um, and so that's kinda the, the policy recommendation that we're looking at from, from you all.
So if it's over a certain size, they need to come before P and Z.
Yeah, let it, let it, let me run through here briefly. Um, so the exemptions were the one acre, uh, some things with safety, like visibility triangle, utility easements, um, a nursery. So if they're literally growing them to be harvested, uh, this is exempt from that. Um, any diseased dying, uh, or dead tree. And then, um, like a natural event, like we had the, the, uh, the straight line winds come through and knock over some trees, those would be exempt, you're not gonna be penalized for that. Um, or have to, you know, if it's a public safety issue, you can bring those down, um, underbrush. So the clearing kind of, of the underbrush of property is exempt, uh, right away. And then drainage, um, is defined on a, a plat of record. So that, that's where our process really comes in, into, into play because, um, currently we don't require like a tree survey for, uh, the drainage. And so now we would take a look at that and if you're wanting to plop your drainage, uh, pond right where we have a grove of oak trees, we're gonna say, is that the best place for that? And maybe you can develop or site, uh, site plan around those elements. Uh, so the, those are some of the things. So the tree designation, uh, we have protected trees, which is any healthy tree with an eighteen inch caliper, or, I'm sorry, uh, um, DBH, which is the, the breast height. And it's actually defined, uh, later on in the ordinance as four and a half feet above grade. So that eighteen inches would be measured at, at four and a half feet above grade. Um, so that would be a protected tree, uh, so long as it is not a mesquite, uh, bois d'arc, ash, juniper, uh, locust, gum, uh, berm, bemeilia, box elder, hackberry or cottonwood. So any other tree, um, would be a protected tree if it's not those above eighteen inches. You have the quality trees, which are the same specimen, uh, but are ten inches and above. And then you have quality tree stands, like I was kinda talking about, like a grove. Uh, and then you have large secondary trees, which are, um, which are actually the, um, non-protected trees that are eighteen inches or above, like your hatchberry, uh, hackberries and mesquites and et cetera. Um, so that's going through there. So in order to take, as, as written today, in order to remove those, you have to get a permit, um, and do a, a tree protection plan, uh, a tree survey on the, on the site showing what your protected trees are, quality trees, large secondary and other. Um, as you move forward, um, it talks about the permit review and approval process. Um, it does state that the, the DBH is measured four and a half feet above grade. It says that the, similar to other permits, they expire after a hundred and eighty days. So if you pull it and don't do anything for a year, you're gonna have to come back and, and do the same thing. Um, there is a, um, to get a wa, it's not a waiver, but, um, the P and Z, so you all have the ability to, uh, grant relief from these, uh, for the mitigation. Uh, it requires a letter, a tree inventory, a site plan with topography, um, alternative tree preservation and mitigation plan. So it talks about, um, alternative plans to this in lieu of following it. It talks about mitigation and what you would do, um, in terms of, uh, like replanting. So if you do remove these types of trees, the protected trees, you have to replant on site with, um, with the caliper. Uh, currently, as it's written, uh, any new, new, uh, trees planted to mitigate the tree removal would be a, a minimum of two inches, um, DBH at the time of planting and five feet high. Uh, so that's something we can take a look at. Um, you can also pay a fee in lieu of mitigation. Um, the director of planning and development, uh, has the ability to approve any, um, money in lieu of fifty percent or below on the site. Anything fifty percent above of the tree mitigation fee in lieu comes to P and Z.
Are those decisions able to be appealed to city council? Or are we saying P and Z is, that's where the buck stops?
P and Z is where the buck stops.
Okay.
Currently, I, I believe, as written. So y'all serve as a tree board.
I'm just, for things like, you know, fifty percent, you know, you know, if it's money in lieu of more than fifty percent, if it's just gonna be appealed to council, might as well, that part might as well just go to council from the get-go. 'Cause it makes no sense to
Well, they're.
Put it here and then have it go there. For that specific topic, since it deals with, you know, money and the community being, you know, upset that they're gonna wipe the whole area out of trees, let the council deal with that, it makes no sense to.
As far as the overall context of this draft as well, when this, with the overall subdivision ordinance, there was definitely an attempt to remove some of the responsibilities from council and put them with this board. You know, approval of a few different types of plats, I think were put onto that view, and this obviously being one of them. And so just, yeah, I guess that's why it's in there, 'cause there was an intentional attempt to remove the council's workload, which with the new writing of the code, I don't know if it's necessary or anything needs to be done, but it's kinda where that came in as well. But at the same time, well, just speak to that, just the numbers as well, 'cause, 'cause really it kinda feels like, I mean, sure, we can have a fund that's dedicated, it has to be used for trees. It feels like that money's gonna get used for other things. See Trey back there thinking about things he wants to do with it, where he wants to, um, no, but, um, I mean, you know, someone cuts down a tree, do they replant in the same spot? Like developer comes in, they wanna cut down so many trees, is it just worth having them replant in that area? You know, just to maintain the trees?
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, I think we thought about the money, 'cause it sometimes maybe trees on that site aren't as valuable as maybe trees somewhere else. Um, and so, but the fact is they were always, in my mind, gonna be used for trees and trees alone.
Yes.
You know, and.
Uh, trees, parks.
I think that's how it reads.
Not.
It's the tree funds for trees and parks and other public spaces.
Not a sewer line. No, and that's very co, common, um, you know, sometimes you just can't, uh, logistically, but you can pay a fee in lieu and then those funds can be spent for beautification projects, you know, in different areas of the town. Um, I'm trying to think, I think that's pretty much, um, all, I mean, that's the, the gist of it. Uh, one thing to, to keep in mind is it says that the app, the fee, uh, we'll have to establish that fee. So this was not adopted and so we don't have a fee yet, um, in our fee schedule. So if you adopt it, uh, that's something that we would have to come back, um, and add to our fee schedule, which not a big.
That would be the council law, right?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So with that, um, uh, Matt Lewis and I had some conversations about the tree, tree list. And who did you say had, uh, the good, I'm sorry?
University of Texas.
Yeah, there's a University of Texas Wildlife Center and they made a recommendation for trees that are, um, good for the area. Um, and so we might wanna take a look at updating our, um, if you require trees, you know, what is appropriate for Bastrop? You know, uh, some, uh, species that are not listed now are allowed, but they're invasive. You know, they attract, uh, you know, insects, they attract the, the gackles, the blackbirds. So there's some things we might just not want to allow. Uh, so we might wanna take a look at updating our allow or permitted, uh, planting list, um, as a part of this. If, if y'all would want to add that to, to this, um, yeah, I mean, some things just make sense and some things don't. That's right. That's correct. It's a, it's a living document and we can always, uh, update it, but I, I think it makes a lot of sense to, uh, take a look at it on the front end and if we're requiring trees to be planted, uh, we want them to be the right tree and not just picked out for the sake of it. So, uh, we would recommend adding that to, to this, uh, preservation ordinance.
Do we in, in, anywhere, uh, talk about how they have to maintain watering and sprinkling and things like that?
That would be in the technical, uh, design manual. So as a part of the code, we would have irrigation, uh, and all that, like the drip line, uh, and, and other, but yes, that would be.
What are you specifically referencing? Well, I think, who maintains?
Well, on their side, if they had to put in a system, an irrigation system or a drip.
You're talking about the developer.
Or water collection, some, some way that if we're telling them that they have to put trees in, we should also be advising them, they need to, they need to put water in and not just.
And we, we require that today, um, and that will continue forward in the new code, so.
We're talking about, you're talking about like the developers and the public right away? That's what you're referencing?
If, I guess I'm saying if we're telling them that they, they can cut down trees and put in new trees.
Right.
They have to put in a dedicated yard.
Yes.
We're doing, we're doing that.
Yes, sir, we do. So the trees have to have the irrigation system and we make sure that during the site development plan and building plan and then we actually go and inspect it, uh, when it, when the site's being developed.
And just for clarification for you guys, for those that were here, am I correct in remembering or am I misremembering that a lot of the public input we got individually, 'cause we never had anybody come speak on it about tree preservation and tree restrictions on private property for single family homes, was that the community was not entirely behind that? Am I misremembering that? 'Cause I know we spent a lot of time on this and we all kinda ended up there because that was kinda the varied feedback that we got. I know that's the very, the varied feedback I got was, we're not Austin. And if I wanted to live in Austin, I'd go live in Austin, as far as, you know, what I could do with trees on the property.
But we are Bastrop and, like I said, the trees in our logo.
And I think, and something that I got was, please don't let people cut all the trees down in town. Because, I mean, it just, if you look at where they have cut the trees and where they haven't, and especially with drainage issues, I mean, that's a huge thing on trees too. So I think we really need to rethink, as Pablo brought up, this one acre. We definitely need some protection.
Ignore the one acre and look at it more as homestead, regardless of the size of your lot. 'Cause, 'cause we, we picked one acre 'cause it basically included everybody. So I, I would say that if we were going to have like a heritage tree type ordinance, that it would apply to everybody, including the city. Meaning the city, if, if, if a property owner can't cut down a tree, then neither can the city for capital improvement projects or power lines or anything. It's, it's, if, if it applies to the private property owners and their single family residents, then it applies to the city as well. Including, you know, if the city spends millions going around a heritage tree or something like that, that's the way it is. 'Cause we shouldn't have two different sets of rules.
So we shouldn't be, shouldn't take out the, the oak tree at the top of twenty-one for a roadway.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna, if we're gonna tell private property owners and citizens what they, you know, that there's, that there are certain types of trees they cannot cut down no matter what, then that applies to the city as well and anybody else that, that is within our city limits.
You can, you can move trees, just so, you, you can move trees.
Some types.
Yeah, but, but it, it doesn't, it, it, the city could do that, but it, number one, at great cost. Number two, telling, telling the citizens, well, you can't cut down the tree on your property. You can spend, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars to move it and that's okay. That's not reasonable in my opinion, whereas the city can sit up here and vote to spend a hundred thousand dollars, we're not tax dollars to move a tree, it's not comparable. It's either we don't mess with them or we, or we allow it, it's, it's one or the other, it can't, it's not both.
And, and I guess what I'm arguing for is that if we have, and I'm really, given the, the extreme case that this is a heritage tree, that, uh, it's a, a large tree, it's taken a very long time to get there, that, that we really think about, it belongs to a lot of people, you know, it, it's a great tree, it provides shade. I'm sure if it's a tiny lot and you got a massive tree on there, you shouldn't have the right to cut it down. Your neighbors are gonna be affected, I'm just thinking that's how I would look at it. But I don't know, I'm just thinking, we should make it hard.
Well, I think we should make it hard, uh, but if a private property owner can show that, that tree remaining, well, the roots will, uh, move into their foundation or wreck their plumbing or cause great financial or possibly physical harm to them.
I saw it in here where you can get an arborist, certified arborist landscaper architect to go in there and make those.
That's in there, yeah.
Well, that's, I think that's only for diseased trees, that's not for interference.
As I, as I read the very front of this, one of the exemptions, minimum, if you're under an acre, none of this applies. So if I were remodeling and I wanted to cut down that massive oak, I could. Am I correct, reading this correctly?
That's right. And G, section G six is actually the relief you're talking about. And G, section G six is actual the relief you're talking about, where they could come and have a conversation with you and give those reasons why they need relief from it, uh, but that's only, only residential, um, above an acre, so, to your, to, to your point, anything an acre and below does not require that. Um, right now, we don't have a heritage tree, uh, that's something that could be added.
How is that defined?
We'd have to define it, but typically if your protected tree is eighteen inches, you would say a heritage tree is anything over eighteen inches and above, or, you know, uh, it, it, there's no good way to do it, I, I think there's, like the Texas A and M forech- forestry, uh, there's different methods, uh, but it's kinda like parking, um, there's different standards you could use, and we just have to find the one that's, that's right for us. Um, I think it, it would make sense to me, um, if a protected tree is eighteen inches and, and greater, um, you know, you would wanna set it somewhere above the eighteen inch mark, um, and, and we can research that, and we could come back with a, a recommendation and some more data on that, um, but I mean, it, it varies across the board from ordinance to ordinance. But a heritage tree, from how, uh, Commissioner Cern is speaking, would be something that it does not matter where it is, if you wanna take it down, you gotta have a conversation.
Is, is that what you're saying, or are you saying that if it's that, you can't take it down, period?
No, it, in my experience, once you have a heritage tree, it triggers a whole other decision process, and if it has to be moved, well, first of all, if it's healthy, you should do everything in, in, cities should do everything they can to, to preserve it, um, and sometimes that may mean moving it. This is really expensive properties, now, if I would affect a homeowner, um, on a really tiny lot, yeah, I think we're saying, there's some things, you, you may not be able to do everything you can on your property, just like water, in a way, you know, we can't just do everything one on our own.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
What's the maximum punishment the city can set by ordinance for somebody that would violate a tree ordinance?
Is it two? Five hundred?
So if you tell me I can't move my her- my heritage tree, and I poison it, and then it dies, and then I have an arborist come in and say, oh, it's dead, five hundred dollars is where I could be fined wise, and that's it?
The buyer definitely can prove that all forms, because a big ass classy misdemeanor or violation, it goes up to two thousand dollars.
Could you come say that in the microphone, I'm sorry, chief, since we're recording?
Sorry, I mean.
But it's still through the judge though.
So for any classy, unless it's specifically written less, the maximum fine for an, an ordinance violation is a classy misdemeanor in the state of Texas, that's a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars, unless that offense has to do with public safety, and then the fine can go up as high as two thousand dollars.
And my, I'm not trying to figure ways, work around it, what I'm basically getting it is, how much time are we gonna spend, you know, trying to do a heritage ordinance if, if the idea is, go through this expensive process, cause look, I gotta, I'll spend more than five hundred dollars just having.
It's less expensive to pay the fine than it is to get the.
I'll spend more than five hundred dollars having a tree inventory and aerial done, a site plan.
Go through the process and come through here.
And putting together all type, you know, the, the stuff that I need to come and apply for, to, to get an exemption, I'd spend more money on that than just paying the, the five hundred dollar fine. And while I'm not advocating for that, what I am advocating for is us spending a lot of time trying to come up with something that is otherwise moot, you know, if somebody really wants the tree gone, they're gonna, it's, it's gonna be gone.
But I think we're, we're here to kind of look out, and not really establish fees and fines, and I think what we're trying to say is, uh, representing the people, is these are things that are important to us, and I think trees are, are invaluable to a site, and, and as a board, we should say, that's it, and now how it gets, we have a lot of people cutting down trees, cause they're only gonna pay five hundred bucks, I think that's a handful of people that would do that, I think most people are gonna wanna abide by what we say, we really wanna have happen, so we're not gonna build a, a thirty-five foot plywood sign.
I, I agree, and I also think though that it's only a handful of people that would cut down a heritage type tree, there's only a handful of people that would come in by, you know, Debbie's property and then cut down this really tall old tree, that's not gonna be the average person, so, you know, the, the idea that, yes, you could, you know, could, you know, with, let's just use the one acre or homestead, could everybody in the city cut down all their trees? Sure, they, they could, but it's not, it's not gonna happen, and even worst-case scenario is that even if we restrict it, if everybody pays five hundred bucks, they're still gonna cut down all the trees on their property, and, you know, the city's gonna have.
I've seen other ordinances written that establish a fine for removing a heritage or protected tree, and it's based on, uh, a dollar amount per caliper, and, and this, the DBH, I'm, I'm used to caliper inches, but anything, so if you have an eighteen inch tree, and you cut it down without coming through this process, we're gonna fine you X amount of dollars per inch of that tree.
Uh, uh, under, under ordinance?
Yes, it would be adopted as a part of the tree preservation.
So would that, would that, would that maximum, would that five hundred, that five hundred dollar ma- chief is saying the five hundred dollar maximum would still apply? So if I cut down thirty.
Cause is it, is it a classy misdemeanor to violate that ordinance, which triggers the state law, which overrules anything we write at five hundred dollars, correct?
Hmm, I don't know if that is, but I know that you can adopt fees, and that's something that we can make sure that we're on solid ground with our attorney, and, and bring back, um, if he thinks that that's something we can do, I've seen it done, doesn't necessarily mean it's, um, the right thing or the, uh, the thing to do, but, um, I think it's something worth researching, and if that is an option available to us, is that something y'all would be interested in adopting?
Chief has a.
Yeah, go ahead, chief.
So there's, there's two aspects that you're looking at, the criminal side is the ordinance, right, but when you talk about fees and things like that, you can make that a civil case where the civil, where the city could bring a civil action for the fee, and, and, and potentially do that, what Matt's saying is, is, is potentially viable, so, you gotta be ro- I mean, when you, when you deal about these things, there's, there's two avenues and two realms that you can, that you can deal with, and as you know, you, you hit the nail on the head, we, we, we write ordinances for the majority to follow, there will always be a loophole here or there, and, and I think, and to go with what you're saying, sir, to try to write an ordinance that will catch that half percent that's gonna try to violate it, um, is, is gonna be so intense anyway, and if, if they're sent on doing that, it's, it's gonna be a difficult task, and, but like Matt said, if, if it goes to a fee, that may be a civil action that ta- takes in, and so then that fee could go over five hundred dollars, but like I said, uh, you, you hit the nail right on the, the head, Commissioner Lasson, it's a classy misdemeanor, now, if there's a state law that says if you cut down this type of tree and it makes it a class B misdemeanor, then, then the penalty is you're looking at, you know, a hundred and eighty days in jail and a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars of both, so, but we can't, we, the, by law, the city can't, uh, enact anything higher than a class C misdemeanor.
So we need to look at what a civil case would look like from the city?
Yes, that's what it sounds like. That's right.
A fine for a cali.
Yeah. Now, I, I will say, um, for some reason, they overlooked it this session, but two years ago, this was a very hot topic, um, at the state legislature, and they almost took tree preservation, uh, authority away from cities, um, so I, I know it'll come up again, they were busy doing other things this session, uh, lots of fun stuff they did, but, um, I, I would anticipate them bringing this up again at some point in the future, but, um, to the extent we can, uh, going back to the purpose statement of the B three code, is authentic bass drop, geographically sensitive, um, and fiscally sustainable, and trees are certainly, check all three of those boxes, so I think this is extremely important.
Let's look at it, it gives more information for us.
Okay. Besides the heritage trees and the fines though, um, as far as how this is structured, how it's implemented, are, are y'all okay with what y'all did a year ago?
I think as long as we update, like you mentioned earlier, from the University of Texas.
Trees.
The species, we just need to update that part. And what about the size of the lot?
I, I, we don't really, I don't think you need a size as much as it would, it's, like Matt said, it's, it's more homestead than it is lot size.
Yeah.
The, the lot size was designed to give everybody a, you know, a fair shot at this, cause I don't, I, I think there was like two or three lots in the city that were, that were over one acre that were single-family residents, and so that, that was the idea.
Well, I think, as well, just thinking about the idea that chief said, that, you know, code's written for the masses, not for the loopholes, and Patrick was saying as well, you know, these heritage trees, especially downtown, have existed, they are heritage trees, so they obviously haven't been cut down for most of their life, correct? And they've made it this far, and so someone coming in and doing it, if they wanna find a way around it, great, but it's these areas, as the city expands, where we run into these new trees, and we have people developing these areas that aren't necessarily going to live on them.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's definitely where the.
That's.
The focus needs to take place.
That's the emphasis.
On, not that there's this great tree downtown that some guy's just gonna randomly cut down, cause they won't, but it's the, it's the new area where they wanna put a road or a power line.
Yeah.
And for those that weren't here, that was the focus, the primary focus of, of this was not regulating people that already live here, the idea was regulating people, developers that come in, make money off the community, and then leave, and, and we're kinda left holding the bag.
Yeah, we can.
That was, that was the focus.
We've had examples of developments in this town.
Yes.
That, the, the property's been clear cut, pretty much, and it's a shame.
And that's a beautiful part of, uh, when we were working through the new code and the new process, is we're gonna have that information up front, uh, so when you come in with a regulating plan, um, you know, you're gonna lay out, you know, your block type and your, your patterns and such, but a part of that is you're gonna show us where the trees are on the site, you know, and, um, and so, whereas today, they've come in and show us what they wanna do, and then they come back and say, oh, we gotta cut all these trees down, cause this is where we're building a, 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 a house, right? Or, or other, uh, now we're gonna put that at the forefront, um, and incorporate, uh, the natural geography into the design of the property. And again, where it is just, uh, we're not saying you cannot do it, we're just saying, this is how you're gonna do it, and if you don't do it this way, you gotta have a conversation.
Is it requiring a certain number of trees per lot, something that the city has regulation over? I know a lot of HOAs have rules that, you know, number.
Yeah, you can write that into PDs, um, what are the street tree requirement plannings now for commercial and, or, one per, one per what? One, one per thirty foot, uh, would be the.
One per thirty foot of what?
Uh, street frontage. For street trees, is that what you're?
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about developers having to put trees on the lot.
Oh, yeah, so.
Or builders having to put trees on the lot.
Yeah, um, current, currently, u- usually how you see that is in the form of a planned development, so you'd say, you know, you have to have X amount, uh, you have to have two in your front yard, uh, you know, one in your backyard or something like that, uh, I don't think that, uh, other than street trees, that we're looking at requiring that right now.
That, that, that may be something that we look at, you know, even if it's just one in the front yard, it's, you know, we're talking about preserving trees and whatnot, if we're gonna allow trees to be cut down at all, you know, having the builder spend a, you know, three, four hundred dollars to put a tree in a front yard or a couple or in the backyard.
I think they, we probably wanna, um, l- look at how, look at how that would relate in the different place types.
That's.
You know, um, P three, for example, that might be a good idea, P five, probably wouldn't work most times.
I, I agree.
Yeah, so, um, we can take a look at it.
Is there currently a landscape, uh, plan to be submitted?
Absolutely.
Commercial development?
Yes.
So that's where we would probably.
Yes.
Address that.
So that would be with the regulating plan, uh, so they'd have to show us a planting plan, uh, where they're planting, the spec- the species, the caliper, for example, irrigation plan, all that good stuff. Okay? All right, well, we'll put some of this together, and this is one that we'll, we'll revisit, uh, prior to our joint meeting, so, uh, here's where we're at today, uh, we've gone through June sixth, June twenty-second today, um, next meeting is June twenty-seventh, so next week, uh, we'll see you all again, uh, we'll talk about applications and checklists, uh, development flowchart, and then parking regulations, I know we've done, done a presentation, but we need to get into the details and figure out how we're gonna regulate parking, so, uh, that'll be June twenty-seventh, and then, um, Tuesday, July ninth, is a, a joint work session, uh, with city council, uh, and that starts at four-thirty on Tuesday, July ninth, uh, so you all have, uh, had this calendar emailed to you, but please keep those two dates in mind, the June twenty-seventh is your regular meeting, but the Ju- July ninth is a special, uh, work session with the council.
Really quickly, at the risk of extending the meeting, which I'm not trying to do, um, I know that all these things were like items, action items, that this council wanted us to discuss and make a recommendation, I guess, did we have a recommendation for street sections, or was that just an information section, or was there something we were kind of?
I, I didn't hear anything, um, as, as Matt walked through the street sections himself, I didn't hear any issues with the way that they're being proposed, um.
Cause I know the city, uh, the council has us to look at it, and I guess, I mean, there's a lot more to the code than what we're looking at, that what, here that we're not really addressing, cause they weren't necessarily specific problems that council wanted extra time spent on.
You know, one thing that specifically came up were sidewalks, um, you know, both sides, one side, are, you know, are they appropriate? Um, in some areas, that's not an option, you know, like in your main street, your P five, you're gonna have sidewalks, um, and your P three, um, is it appropriate to have sidewalks on, on one side of the street? Um, you know, that was, uh, the, the one thing I could, I could remember, um.
And I know Matt's, the other Matt's been working really hard, but it's difficult when you get the, the morning of the meeting.
Hmm.
To have time to really look at it and, and maybe study it and come up with questions.
Yeah. They're, yeah, uh, they're included in the pattern book, um, but, um, take some time to digest it.
Why frankly, there's a whole lot of discussion and the like that has gone on, and we've had the rodeos, and we've, but when you get down to really studying it.
Yeah.
It's, it's different than looking at it in the design book or.
Sure.
Walking around the building, walking around the room.
Sure.
Because we have the, the synergy here on this panel that, and I can't be more proud of the, the group that we have here, because we ask good questions, we're, it's obvious that everything has been studied, and issues and things, there are items are brought up that we may not think about when we're sitting there looking at something by ourselves, so.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of things that, that come out when we're sitting here.
Yes.
In, in session, going over these items.
Okay, so any comments that you do come up with, email them to our team, or Matt Lewis's team, or both, and, uh, we can bring any talking points back that we need to, and or, or recommendations on it.
Y'all cool, y'all cool with that?
The only thing I would say is that there, there seems to be a couple in here of, of street types that are, they're essentially the same, um, you know, or, or they're not really, they're not much different, you know, like, like the neighborhood street one and two, I'm, I'm aware that one allows for parallel parking on one side versus two sides, but, you know, we're talking about two feet of difference and two separate types of, of things, and so I just, in, in the idea of.
So that becomes extremely important when we go back to looking at things like we talked about fire protection. That two feet i- is extremely important when you're talking about, uh, widths of a firetruck, uh, the doors opening, so I know it may not sound like a big deal, but it, it really is.
What I'm advocating is, is, does it make sense to, you know, the whole goal is to simplify from what we are now.
Yes.
Does it make sense instead of having one and two, to just get rid of one and just have the two? So instead of fifty-four and twenty-eight, we just stick with the fifty-six and thirty, and there's different variations of that, you know, or, or there's, or, or it's just this one, versus having this other one that, you know, we may or not, we may not need, you know?
Yes, sir. The intent was, uh, when we were working with the fire department, they wanted some, um, some roads that would be designated as their, their primary routes, and so on their primary routes, you would go with a street section that only had parallel on one side, so that they were insured a clear zone, that was, that was kind of our, our workaround with the fire department, so what they'd like to do is evaluate where they would be[1670.26]
That was, that was kind of our, our workaround with the fire department, so what they'd like to do is evaluate where they would be connecting, and they would designate certain street sections that would be required to have no parallel on one side, to meet the, to meet their demand. That was the intent, why we drew another section that varied so slightly. So, and, and again, these are just options, it's supposed to be inspirational, so that the development community can come up with tools, you know, to make their developments unique, and so what we tried to do is create a variety of, of cross-sections that would be allowable. That was the intent.
I, and, and if there's, if they, they, they pay somebody that spends more time, you know, going through it, that's fine, I'm just, when I look at it and I go, you know, could we just stick with one, you know, that's a grader that works, and, and, and remove some options?
Gotcha.
You know, it's like when you go to, I don't know, Cheesecake Factory, and they have like a menu with like a thousand things, you're like, you know, what do I want, and what different ways can I set it, versus just having twenty, and it's a little bit easier to, to digest and...
Yes, sir.
And make work.
I think we, how many do we have now? Twelve, we started out with, what, eighteen, or... So, we have whittled, but again, they're all driven based off that effort with, with Matt's team, and the fire department, and Public Works, and...
If it's whittled, and this is it, then that's, that's fine, I'm just, that's, you know, it's, it's a lot of different variations, and some of them seem to be very similar and close, and if there's one small, minute difference between one versus the other, does it make sense to have both, or just kind of do something, incorporate, you know, or everything, and just have one option?
So... Back to just the idea that the council wants us to look at this for some reason, I would say that, as advice to council, that, I mean, I'm personally happy to go with what Matt's recommending, as far as trial, I know we got a one-year review, unless someone... I mean, I, I just don't see a question to answer, so I just want to make sure council asks, what did you come up with on this? That you can say, look, for the most part, yeah, let's get, we're good to go, unless specific questions or further conversation, I guess, change that.
Sure.
From what goes on, so that it's, there are no question in their minds that we looked at it, we kind of digested it, and gave it back to them, without any obvious problems, but if there are problems, we can adjust those in a year when we...
So, for example, if you...
Or two years, or three years, when we...
I, I mean, the conversation could have been, we don't like parallel, we think it should be head-in parking, and then we would tell you why head-in's a bad idea, and y'all would say why it's a great idea, but you, you agree with the parallel parking, so you know, there's, there's no discussion to be had, yeah.
What about this issue, I know, as I'm looking at that big picture there, I'm guessing after July ninth, that's kind of our last chance to kind of give some recommendation, like today, we brought up the tree preservation. How does that, is it, do we vote on something, do we bring it back up? I'm okay with saying...
Yeah, so what we're going to do is, on June twenty-seventh, we'll put all of these in kind of a bulleted list, so we'll take stuff from the June sixth meeting, stuff from today, we're going to revisit tree preservation. So, June twenty-seventh, although it's not on the bullet, those are the three items we'll discuss, but we'll also discuss kind of your overall recommendations based off the last meetings. Yes. So, y'all are bringing dinner. That's right.
We also have a code, right, on Wednesday, code rodeo at the Upper House?
Yes, on the twenty-sixth, thank you for bringing that up. There's two different times, it's three, three-thirty to five-thirty, and, yes, it's posted on the website. We've done social media posts about it, it's on all of our entrances, so June twenty-sixth is a, a community input meeting, and we'll, we'll have all this information available. Anything else?
Item four, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Motion, second, if you would, favor? Thank...
Thank you.